This conference will now be recorded.
I think that may supersede texting and driving.
But it's our company policy is only for not over 10 miles an hour.
That is.
You're all like moving the vehicle.
I have about it a couple of times.
14. Should get here when she gets here. Yeah, public hearing while we're supposed to vote on public hearing items. We'll give her a couple.
I'll make note in the minutes that you were not, that you were intentional.
Well, we can adopt first reading. So that when we do them, you know how before we were doing it back into the agenda? So it's all in one so that like when we have Forrest, we don't have him for four hours. We're separating him. Yeah. So we can adopt first reading. Wow, just going backpacking. I'm gonna get lost. Or any handbag, no nothing. You need some more room?
Good for us.
Srawler. Yep, I think we are. All right, we're going to open public hearing. Starting with the second reading of marijuana ordinance 150 and ordinance to allow for the sale of recreational marijuana in Title III of MS town code. Public comment.
My name's Christopher Young. I'm an attorney in Bozeman and I represent Top Shelf Botanicals with respect to the ordinance. My client asked me to come to your meeting and provide whatever commentary I could. I've just briefly had an opportunity to read the ordinance. The first thing that I would like to say is that I'm glad that NS is updating its ordinance. Because we were running into some difficulty with business licenses being medical versus adult use and now that you have all marijuana businesses covered, I thank you for that. The only other thing that I would say again, I apologize for my voice. It's I've been a little bit hoarse for a while. In 3-6-2, 3-6-2, the compliance part, Part A. It says marijuana business license applications must show compliance with state and county laws, rules, regulations and ordinances. No business license shall be issued until applicant shows compliance with any and all state, county or other town law, laws, rules, ordinance, regulations. The only comment I would have about that is that you might run into a chicken and egg scenario where the state is going to say, well, you have to have your business license from the city first and the city said, well, you have to show compliance with the state. So that's just kind of the only comment I have on that. But again, I don't have anything else to comment on. I appreciate again your efforts to update your ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Second call for public comment on ordinance 151 or 150, sorry.
So Mayor Nikki, can you hear me?
I can, James.
Okay, I mean, it's not a public comment. I'm the town attorney. But I just want to say it's great to see Christopher Young down there appearing in person and providing some comments on this. As we all know, we've been working with Chris Young. He represents Top Shelf and he also represents another business entity in this growth industry, let's call it that. And you know, we've had and enjoying a very good professional rapport and relationship and we're hoping to work at any kinks. And I could just say that with the adoption of this ordinance, I think that things will work out for Top Shelf and anybody else who wants to come into town and do business there and pursue this sort of thing. So we're not, we're not trying to make it more difficult. We're actually, we're just trying to close up some of the loopholes and make it easier for everybody to understand what the playing field is. And again, Chris, if you hear me, I appreciate you showing up down there.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks. Thank you, James. All right, third call for public comment on ordinance 150. Any public comments submitted to the? All right, this goes in, closing the public comment portion, commissioners.
To approve ordinance 150 marijuana ordinance.
Second.
So there's a first and a second to approve ordinance 150. Any discussion amongst the council? I think we. There's several that are worded this way and it is always going to be a chicken and an egg and I think as long as we're. Yep. Any other discussion? All right, I'm gonna call the vote. I'm gonna start with you tonight.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries to approve ordinance 150. All right, second item on public hearing is the first reading of pre-treatment ordinance 152, an amendment to Title 10 setting for uniform requirements of industrial users of publicly owned treatment works. Since this is the first reading of this, Eric, do you want to give a background on it or would you like myself too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Does anybody need him to stand at the podium?
For the recording.
Okay, and it's better.
Good. Hey, so the pre-treatment ordinance is basically to protect the lagoon we have, make that last as long as we can. We really, this town can't really afford a mechanical plant or the cost of it right now. It's not to punish anybody or not anything like that, not pointing, it's just something that should have been done. When this lagoon was built, it's also required by our DEQ permit. And this is gonna help us out. It's gonna make that all run better.
So I guess I'll expand on Eric since he's like public speaking. Our DEQ permit is specific for discharge. What? Yep. Is a discharge permit as we discharge into the Madison. So that makes our stipulations and regulations from the DEQ a little more unique and stringent. So when that permit was issued, it was also required for a pre-treatment. And while our town code currently allows for pre-treatment, but it's vague and has no goal. So I feel that's very unfair to a business owner to say, you need something, but we're not telling you what you need. So this sets a uniform standard for all users. Also in Great West report, it had recommended pre-treat and the master plan as well. So pretty much every engineer that has looked at our system has been sending us red flags. So that is that. And with our next DEQ permitting coming up sometime soon and unknown standards coming down the pike for us, I in no way see those requirements becoming less stringent and in fact, more stringent. So without that permit, we cannot have that lagoon. And the next option for the town of NS would be a mechanical treatment facility, which in my best guesstimate is over 30 million. And that is a very conservative estimate. Most of the ones that have looked at that have done upgrades are 35 and have gone over budget. So that's where we are with the background to pre-treat. That being said, that's the background on it. Public comment is now open. All right, if you could come to the microphone and say your name.
My name's Aaron Moore. I own the campground down the street. So obviously it's kind of catered, you know, tailored to us. So I just have, I have a handful of questions. Are you able to answer questions? Or I mean, I guess, I'm not sure exactly how this works, but I have questions and then comments on the actual wording of the ordinance that I think are important to consider.
Let's hear concerns and.
So I guess my first question is who authored this?
This was authored by Great West Engineering.
Is anybody from Great West present?
No.
Okay. So I guess my next question is then, is there anybody that's an expert here to answer questions in this? Would that be Eric or like, that's the best? Okay. So I guess number one is, so when I look through the objectives of it, I don't see anything to do with capacity issues. So it's not a capacity issue that we're facing. It's not listed as an objective. So we're good with the capacity of the lagoon to facilitate the town's wastewater.
Can you define capacity because it's.
How much wastewater goes into the lagoon based on what the lagoon can handle in gallons per day?
Yes, that way, but there's more than just a hydrological capacity for a lagoon. There's also biological.
Correct.
Demand, all those others that are listed in that.
Correct.
Ordinance as well.
Okay. So I guess then if we, if we move to section 2.1, the, I would say that, you know, my largest concern and like, just to be clear, I'm happy to be part of the solution. I just want to understand what's going on here and like what the, you know, what the goal is and then what we're stating has to be done exactly. So like if you look at, if, you know, I'll go through, you know, B4. It says pollutants including oxygen demanding pollutants, BOD, which is normal released in discharge at a flow rate or a pollutant concentration which either singly or by interaction with other pollutants will cause interference. But there's no definition of what that flow rate is. If we go to B7, it says toxic gases, vapors, fumes and a quantity that may cause. That's very general, like what is the quantity that does cause, not may cause? Because there's no real, like, there's no real definition of what causes that. So it's hard to be able to meet a stipulation with the word may. If you go to B9, are sufficient to create a public nuisance or hazard of life as defined by who or what standard? There's really no definition. It just says causes this, but who's saying that it caused it? Does California say it causes it or does NS say it causes it? Does Eric say it caused it? Does Great West say it causes it? Who says it causes and what isn't? So it's not really defined. Wastewater that imparts color such as but not limited to. So there's no limits. There's no color. There's no, we don't know what that means. Like I don't know when I read through this document, it doesn't say exactly what that means. B15, detergents that might cause, well, I don't, I mean, what's a detergent that might cause? I don't, you know, like that needs to be defined as these are the detergents that are not allowed in our lagoon. B19, in quantities to consume a significant amount of load. Well, what quantity is that? We don't have a definition of that quantity. So you don't have any guidelines to be able to say this quantity is unacceptable, this quantity is acceptable. So that's, it really just leaves a vague, it's really vague. Now, if you look at B22, I would say B22 wastewater containing two readings on an explosion hazard meter to the point of discharge into the POTW at any point of the POTW of more than 5% or a single reading over 10%. That's a good example, right? So now we have something measurable to say, okay, this is over 5%, it's over 10%. We can measure that to say this is unacceptable discharge. You know, obviously B24 liquid waste from chemical toilets, trailers, campers, other recreation vehicles that have been collected and held in tanks and other containers shall not be discharged except at locations authorized by the town of NS to collect such wastes. So what's the process for getting the acceptance or authorization of the town of NS? That's not defined here. So I don't know what that looks like. It says it can be dumped, but we need to have authorization. So do I have to petition you to get authorization? There's nowhere in the document that would suggest where to get authorization. 2.3, I think is, you know, is telling to this document's lack of clarity. The POTW may establish local limits, additional site specific pollution, pollutant limits, best management practices and additional pre-treatment requirements when in the judgment of town of NS. Well, that basically means you can do whatever you want. Like that's a wide open, we can do whatever we want. We can change anything. If this is passed, it says the POTW may establish local limits based on what you guys decide. And I don't think that that's really a good policy to pass to just say, hey, we can do whatever we want. I, you know, I don't think that that's really a fair, that that's fair at all. 2.6 also says the same. The POTW may impose mass limitations on IUs. Either you will or you won't. You don't may. So I don't think the word may should be in this document. It's just leaves too much gray area, leaves too much argument. I can argue that may doesn't apply to me, you know? So you need to set a standard that applies, that you can clearly define, that you say this is what we're holding you to. Then if we move on to 3.1, 3.1 gets into the pre-treatment, which, which you are saying is defined, but what, what exactly my business or Willie's or the restaurants or the people that you're trying to target with this, what exactly are you suggesting that we have to do? And now maybe that's just me not understanding, but I don't really see a clear definition of exactly what will have to be constructed. So I guess that's one of my questions that I'd like you to answer is what exactly has to be constructed for, to meet the pre-treat requirements? Does anybody know that or?
That is going to be unique to each location and so that's why it can't be set forward.
So what exactly I have to?
You would have to have an engineering consultation for your facility.
To meet what standards?
The overall goal is to make whatever industrial users produce equal that of household use.
Perfect. Okay, so then the next question is, so then if that is the case, what is the standard? Like what are we, how are we measuring this? And I guess my next question would be, have any of the waste that you guys are targeting, have any of that waste been tested? Like, do you know what I put in the sewer?
That's an error.
I mean, I put household waste in the sewer for the most part. You know, it's pee and poop and shower water. But I'm saying that have you tested mine to understand what's it? Like you're suggesting that that's what's going in there. But what I would suggest something different because we're not, and we're not an RV dump site. We don't have campers just coming in and unloading tanks and tanks and tanks and stuff. Our, our visitors are primarily people that have large RVs that go from campground to campground. They're not boondocking, coming with full tanks, just unloading tanks of waste. We have four bathrooms on our site. Almost no one uses their camper bathrooms because who wants to take a shit in your camper bathroom when you have a bath house right here? Nobody does that. You don't want to sync up your camper. So I would say like, if we're measuring the waste, what we do put in, I'm not saying that no one puts a chemical, but I would suggest that I'm able to be able to say, we are not allowed to dump this chemical in there and you can test our waste. And if the chemicals found in there, then we have the discussion. But right now, there's no testing that's been done and I don't have any, like you're being very general and like where you have to hire an engineer and figure this out. I mean, our campground's total income before debt payment is like 50 grand a year is what our net operating income is. So I'm suggesting that this could be hundreds of thousands of dollars that you're passing out of business, put us out of business with this, you know, just a inking of a pen that I don't think you really fully have maybe considered the consequences to the businesses in the town. So I think that you should have a good understanding. If you say, hey, this is what you need to do, then we should have some consultants come in and say, this is what this business needs to do, this is what this business needs to do. And this is going to be the cost. If you put out four restaurants out of business, that doesn't help your town, you know? I don't, and I think we have to, I understand what you're saying about there's $35 million in this new plant, but I don't know that what this document states is actually solving the problem. And I don't even know that the problem that you're trying to solve, we haven't even established that it exists. You haven't tested my waste. You haven't seen how much waste. You don't know my flow. Like I, I've done calculations on what that lagoon can hold and what we contribute to the lagoon as a campground here with 23 sites and four bathrooms. We don't contribute even 1% of the waste to the, to the lagoon. So you know, you're, you're passing something that I don't know that treating me putting in hundreds of thousands of dollars into a pre-treat facility to treat less than 1% of your waste fixes the problem. So those are the comments that I have about the document. Now, the other side that I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you understand, oh, no, I actually have two more comments. 7.1 says time for compliance. It has an effective, it just says the effective date. But we haven't established like what that timeframe looks like here. So if you said like, hey, we're going to set an effective date, a week after we pass this, a year after we pass it, two years after we pass it, I don't know what that effective date looks like. So right now, I don't understand the costs associated with it and I don't understand what my timeline is to be able to pay for this. So do you guys have that established or in your mind what that would look like?
When Eric and I had this discussion for the same reason, knowing that there was going to be unknown costs associated with each business, we didn't want to set like this, you have one year from business license to business license. We wanted to leave it open so that we could say as long as you are making an effort, you've consulted, because we know that it might be based on your businesses' income for the year. This is what I can do this year. This is what I can do next year. This is my 10-year plan. This is my four-year plan, whatever it is, as long as we see a reasonable plan, then we were good to go with it that way rather than saying you have a week to comply. That didn't make any sense to us and we wanted to make it so the businesses could make a long-term plan based on their financials.
Sure.
No. So that was the discussion and why we left that not as a hard timeline.
Which seems fair. I just think that you guys, you know, as a, you guys have a responsibility to understand, like you're saying like, hey, we'll just go figure it out. I think that there has to be a little bit more, obviously the document needs to be more clear. So I don't have any like, what is the BODs? What is the ammonia levels that are allowed for me to dispose? So what does my waste have to be when it comes out? When I understand that, then I can go to an engineer and say, okay, this is what I have to be producing and we can do a test on what I'm delivering right now. There's a chance that what I'm delivering is household waste level. So we're, you know, you're, you're calling out RV parks, you're calling out campgrounds, you're also calling out other businesses in town, but I don't think we have a good understanding of what they're actually putting into lagoon other than assumption of what's going in the lagoon because it's not tested. And I don't think you can responsibly pass ordinance on assumption.
Have you read the current ordinance?
I've only read this. This is the only thing I have.
You should read the town code currently for waste. It's very vague and it says basically that the public works may require pre-treatment and that's the extent of it. So this was.
So you don't think that's a problem either?
That would be why this document comes into play.
Right, so let's make this one good.
So I found that very, very vague.
Yeah, so let's make this one good is what, that's all I'm saying. I'm not, like I said, I'm happy to participate in part of the solution. My goal isn't to have shit backed up in people's houses. That's not, my, my goal isn't to have the entire lagoon full and flowing waste in the Madison. My business revolves around the Madison being a great fishery. So I'm not here to suggest that I don't want to do anything about it, but I'm suggesting that right now, I don't know what I need to do about it. You're saying just call an engineer, but I mean, I had an engineer review this document who said, I wouldn't even know what to tell you. I don't even think you qualify for this by frankly, other than that they call on RV parks. We first, we have to start by testing your waste. So I've met with engineers and I went through that process already and none of them could give me a definite answer of this is what you're going to have to do based on this document. So like unless you can define that, you can't pass something like this that would just put the onus on me, on me, but don't define what I have to actually do other than pre-treat my waste.
Mayor, Mayor Nikki?
Yes, James.
So, and I, I appreciate the gentleman's concerns and this is a rather complex piece of legislation, but it was drafted by, you know, engineers that are experienced in this type of wastewater treatment. You know, the intention here, I think for everybody to realize is that the intention here is to protect not only, you know, the Madison River and the great resource that we have there, the groundwater as well, but to protect and create the best longevity for the, the town's, you know, ponds and the sewer treatment facility there. So I, you know, I'm looking at it, I'm not an engineer, but I am working with other, you know, clients building sewer treatment facilities in New York and of that nature. And when I'm reading this, if you look at section two, I mean, there's general prohibitions and then there are specific prohibitions. And, you know, I think that the gentleman's concerns are legitimate. I mean, this is a complex piece of legislation that's based on engineering data. Okay, but I think we have to keep in perspective that the enforcement aspects of this come down to the town working with, you know, the residents, this gentleman, other business owners in, in finding the way so that everybody, you know, knows what's going on. It may appear complex at first glance, but I think after a careful study, there's, there's a way of proceeding. And I just want to, you know, thank the gentleman for coming forward with his concerns. You know, the engineers, they put a lot of time into this. They've had experience. They've proposed this and I believe this is very similar to what's been adopted in other towns and cities without any problem or difficulty in implementing it. and I believe this is very similar to what's been adopted in other towns and cities without any problem or difficulty in implementing it.
Well, I would suggest if that's the case, then we should have a pretty good idea of what it would cost. If it's been implemented in other places, we should know this is what needs to be done and I can't seem to get an answer to what needs to be done.
The places that I called and talked to that have similar pre-treatment ordinances, put them in before, years ago, before they had established businesses, if that makes sense.
Right.
So it was in place-
So then you did it when you built out the business.
They knew the business was coming, so they did the pre-treat ordinance so that it was done.
Right.
We're so far behind the ball on this. I can't get numbers. I've called multiple towns, I've called multiple people. I can't get numbers to, nobody really knows until they-
Well, we don't want to vote on something that nobody knows. Like I don't know that that's a like-
Because each place is going to be different.
Correct.
We all-
Dad's meat shop and my restaurant.
And my auto parts. We all have to create pre-treat now. Like we are all in the same boat of knowing I have to figure out how, I have to call an engineer, figure out how to set up my my back system for parts washing. Like that's where I know I'm at. And that's the same boat as you.
Yeah, I understand that. But there's no, there's no firm definition of what we could, you know, like, I get it. You can't rinse gasoline down the drain, but I'm flushing poop and pee down the drain. So I don't know what, like, I need to understand, like, that is the proper, household waste is what goes into the lagoon. You're calling out RV parks. So I need to understand exactly what, like, I, and you're saying just call an engineer. I've called engineers. So you give me the number of an engineer that you want me to call that can define this for me. I'm happy to call him and have the conversation. But just to say, well, just smugly like, hey, just call an engineer, I'm gonna have to do it too. That's not an answer, that's not an acceptable answer to me. I don't, I don't, that's just not acceptable.
Eric, do you think you can get numbers, Great West can get numbers for some of these places, some of the stuff we brought up? I know you don't have one in front of you, but more starts, but yeah, or something to go by or something that- Each place is-
And that is the problem right now is this is written off of our current permitting requirements with the knowledge that that permit is up for renewal with no set standards from the DEQ. So just the same boat that you were saying you were in, the town isn't. They are saying we are going to change the standards. No engineer has any idea what these new standards are be- gonna be. We all wish we had this crystal ball that we could give set standards. But we know that we are not going to be even eligible for that permitting process unless we have-
Well, doesn't it make sense then, if that's the case, wouldn't it make sense to wait for them to announce the standards? So we can make sure that the document lives up to the standards? Right, but so they're gonna-
It should have been done 14 years ago.
But so you're trying to tell me that they're not giving you any standards, so you don't have any standards to go by? So we don't know what we need to do? So nobody has any clue what's going on here? And that's what I'm here.
We know that what our current standards are and we know they are going to be more stringent than that. So we know that this will meet our current and that some of the wording that you were concerned about was put that way specifically to allow for the new standards. And where it says may, all the concerns that you had for may, this document, if it goes as it is, those may's to get changed must go through the same public hearing process. So we won't just show up at your door and go, we can't-
But you can't define may. So like, may means we may, we may not. I understand that you're saying if we want to put something hard into the document, but you could also show up and knock on my door and say like, we decided that this is what it is. It doesn't have to go through the document because it's may. We may do this and now we did do this. So that's-
Mayor, Mayor Nikki, Mayor, Mayor, I, I think this has gone well beyond public comment. It's almost like a debate. And what I would suggest is that, you know, the the commissioners have the ability to, you know, consider this legislation. I mean, if people in the future, they find it so ambiguous that they don't have to comply, then that might be a defense to compliance. I mean, I think it's, it's kind of getting way, way far forward to say that there are problems with this that it shouldn't be passed because I don't see it that way. I mean, there are general prohibitions, there are speci- specific prohibitions and that's what this is intended to enact. And I I think that, you know, we've heard from the gentleman, you guys, you really should move on with whether or not you're going to adopt or is this the first or second reading? I I'm not-
First.
Okay, so, I mean, you have his comments. He could, he can look to the engineers. Our engineers, Great Western, they might be able to give him some direction. But I think it's, you know, we're getting just a little way out there as far as the enforcement ability. I'm looking at it. I don't see any, any real issues.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
All right, so that was the first call of public comment. Second call for public comment. And was there anything? Okay. And third call? So first reading, do we commission? There's stipulations for medical. We've run into those. There are several things and, you know, yeah. This has probably been the one that I've struggled with the most. Is there a motion to adopt first reading or do you want it to go back to draft? Okay, I will-
I mean, I get why Grace, Great West has it so bad.
So if the overall goal, if the overall goal is to meet household- On a household requirement.
You sound relatively confident that you are going to meet household standards already, the way you're going, yeah?
Yeah, I'm just asking like, how is it tested? How do we know? You know, like that's the stuff that's unknown to me. It's like, is there a place for me to have our waste tested to understand this? You know, there's also provisions that are agreed in the document that says that the town can approve an RV dump station. So like, we are not an RV dump station, but I mean, what would be the process for me to appeal to the town and say, hey, you, you have a lot of RVs. This is something that you have in your town. It's one of the things, it's a foundation of the tourism industry in this town. So you have to have a solution for it, not just ban it. So that's all I'm, like I said, I'm not trying to be a jerk. I'm not trying to, I'm just, I'm just trying to bring up some points that I think, like, obviously I'm a key proponent and like, I'm a key business here that does put a lot of, you know, RV waste or whatever, you know, toilets. I mean, we have 23 campsites. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we can figure out how do I test it? Like, a lot of me in compliance, I'm not sitting here to say like, I'm gonna get an attorney to come and say, I don't even have to obey by this because this garbage document is not even applying. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm saying like, how can I get within the constraints of the document and make sure that I comply and understand like what does that look like?
Okay.
I move to table first reading of pre-treat ordinance 152.
Tina's got the second. All right. Cory, I'm calling the vote for tabling. Okay, tabled. We'll have Colette. And we will give you Colette Anderson's number. She's not the one that wrote this document. They have a specific engineer that looks and matches. But Colette does all of our water approvals and reviews, so she's going to be a great contact or Dan. And they're both senior engineers there. All right. Now we're gonna go to regular meeting.
Sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. No, it's fine. That's why we have them. It's better than nobody showing up and us hosting something important. So thank you.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Tina? Nikki? Brandy? Not here. Christie's here and Cory's here. Kind of went out of order. June 9th meeting. Nikki's got the second. Any comments on it? All right. That means Tina, you're up. Tina, calling the vote. All right, approval of June 23rd minutes. All right, Nikki made the motion. Christie seconds. Any comment? All right, Nikki. Okay. Public comment on non-agenda. Anything on, not on the agenda that we need to talk about? Going once? You got, you got some, all right. Going twice. Last call for public comment on non-agenda items. All right. Are you on the phone with? We have to participate online so that everybody can hear. All right, planning board, the never-ending planning board as our first item of unfinished.
People, are we two?
The counties have still not come up with a member and then the two that the council must appoint. You had two names, though. Okay. So we're still in the, we need two more people. No, I have a meeting with Heckler on Monday and so we'll discuss, you really need to find the county's appointment.
Was it, can you volunteer, Christie?
Can we all volunteer, Christie? She's like, oh, I love meetings.
You'll be great.
Oh, she said yes. So that was an official from, yes, from Christie. So you want to nominate Christie officially?
I nominate Christie Ranson.
Christie, do you agree?
Yes.
All right. Do we have to?
I like homework.
You like homework? Okay. Because that wasn't an appointment, that was an agreement. So I guess we have to vote on it if we ever get one, fill our last two. So we're writing Christie in. Hi. You're like, I'm just waiting for my two partners.
You're doing it.
We're get, like, we'll drag them in. What are you doing? You, how do you feel about a planning board?
He doesn't live in MS. There's stipulations, people.
Dang it. All right.
We've, we have fulfilled the one line.
Carl is, Carl, Carl. Carl, how do you feel about planning? Do you like homework? So current roster would be Christie, Sean as part of the staff.
Jeremy.
Jeremy and Craig Abernathy. Yes. So we're missing two appointments from the council and the one from-
About Darcy.
Who wants to call Darcy?
I can talk, yeah, let Cory or I talk to Darcy. Darcy might be good.
Okay, Cory, you weren't-
She did the master plan stuff. She wasn't super excited about all that, but she might do it. I don't know.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
In the meantime, I possibly will show up as well.
Yes, please.
What about Blake? Can we make Blake do it?
I don't, that is not gonna happen right now.
Larry Pine. Did anybody ask Larry Pine?
Larry's not here enough.
Okay, okay.
Ooh, Matt would be good, but they live in, that's within the radius, right? He's Skyview.
I will call Matt. I will call Matt.
So how many individuals do we have that are within or outside of the radius or at the one mile? Isn't it like?
Nobody, you may, you may only have two, but we don't have any of them that are, so we're okay.
And did anybody ask Lincoln from the county or does the county-
Lincoln Roberts?
Yeah.
I think he's stepping down from the position.
But maybe if you didn't have to go all the way over there. I don't know.
Lisa Roberts actually said she would do it. It's always everyone's nice.
I can't control other promises.
Have you been here the last 40 years?
All right, I will call Matt Uller. You still have to work on, and you're in charge of Darcy.
Darcy and my new, well, he's been here a year and a half, Dave Veraman. He's actually awesome, a good one. Um, he used to work for, he works for power companies.
Okay.
Yes, almost retired.
I even spelled it right. Yes. No, oh, yeah.
It's Stricknall, right? It's Stricknall, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Clarify our Darcys. Okay. Was there an age?
Well, he's, he's his son, but he's- He's old enough, he's an adult.
He has a great head on his shoulders, he's a big kid.
All right, ask him. You're shaking the tree.
This is a volunteer job.
Learning civic participation. All right, we're just gonna keep that on unfinished business. Let's hope next month we can put it into done business. That would be nice. All right. Cory, next point is yours, which is the anti-camping regs.
So I, I have contacted- So, I, I have contacted three municipalities at this point. The, I think, last meeting, I discussed Twin Bridges. Who's the one I truly think we should mimic because you are killing two birds with one stone? If you, we are on a cycling pathway that's recognized by a lot of bike tourists, and we do live in a tourist town, so, and cyclists do come through here, whether people like it or not, they are gonna be riding on the roads. But, yeah, basically what Twin Bridges has set up is a bike camp that somebody came in and built for the town. They have showers available, and, and there's a key code that you have to punch in, and that prevents like homeless individuals or individuals that we don't want using these facilities. They, you actually, the Public Works Director and the Town Clerk require a picture of you with your bicycle. You just do a selfie, and it's like, okay, I'll send you the code now, and you can go use, use this facility ultimately at no cost. Yeah, so there's, so this facility, you know, initially, we started off talking about anti-camping regulations slash homeless individuals. I guess just, yeah, we, we, there are problems in huge cities around us that offer more more, what do you call it, community goods, like community centers.
Homeless shelters.
Have spaces for these people to hang out at. Ennis, Ennis doesn't have a lot of, of these spaces where people can go, it's, it's not really attractive to homeless individuals, I guess. That being said, we do need to be prepared, and everyone has given me a pat on the back when I tell them, "We're looking into this." I spoke with the acting sheriff in West Yellowstone today. And they, they actually created a stranded folks fund, but West Yellowstone is gonna get a lot more of this traffic. West Yellowstone has trees where people can just disappear off into woods at night. We, on the other hand, have a couple, three parks, four parks. And I would, I would argue that homeless people really like to kind of be incognito and don't like to be in the spotlight, thus our original, one of the original concepts was to put in a cage where the homeless people were gonna, we're gonna...
Defined fenced area.
It was a cage, prison camp.
Defined so that you can monitor appropriately for bad doings. Compliance with the ordinance. And shenanigans.
Right, and, and all of this comes down to the, the concept that homelessness is not considered a crime. So, it's not a crime to be homeless, so municipalities have to afford, if you will, a space, whether it just be a little chunk in the lawn, or what have you. What else do I have regarding this? Right, but if you don't, if you, you don't, this facility can only be used by someone with a, with a bike in Twin Bridges. A lot of, a lot of this, a lot of this, right, right, Twin, Twin will identify a homeless individual, they will call Madison County Sheriff, and they'll be like, "You wanna check in with this individual that appears to be homeless or in need of some assistance?" So, that's step one, identifying the individual ultimately, but...
How much more do we have to do on this, or are we just gonna designate this area up here as a place for them to sleep if we identify an individual?
That's, that's what I would say. We just identify that as a space for homeless people. If there's a need, and therefore, moving forward, we can enforce the, our current ordinances that are no camping in parking lots, no camping in parks. You know? Yeah.
I would highly recommend that the council contracts James to draft this ordinance.
We're not supposed to contact.
Do you want me to?
Yes, Mayor, will you contact James about an ordinance, about camping?
I don't think we have another option. I don't think Lions Club Park is the right place for it.
And then if you're looking at your tourism grant later, the cyclist would actually be kind of a cool, since we are on a route.
Which is furthermore what I was gonna say, I was gonna sign up.
But that's a long term.
Right, sign up for the tourism grant class on the 27th of July, and maybe write a, yeah, it's a tourism grant, so. Yeah.
Twenty seventh, we can all do it.
Alright, so that's the decision. James? The council, like, the council would like me to ask you, contract you to please write draft ordinance for anti-camping, and we will base it, you and I looked at some really great ones from Helena and Seattle, Tacoma.
Right.
So I will work with you to fine-tune what those pieces fit Ennis. Sound good?
Sounds great. Cory, I appreciate your background research into all of this, and, yeah, I mean, you could just definitely designate any area you want, but you, I mean, that's the key thing, is just designate an area, and then, because, I mean, right now, it's not a huge problem, but it can be. I mean, if people start camping out on your public roads in the residential area, that's where you'll really start having some conflicts, so that's, that's really what we want to avoid. And I talked with John Moore, and I'll continue the dialogue with Cory and Your Honor, and we will get this done.
Alright, sounds good. So, the reason I said for the next item, the parking, is dates, we're moving into budget, so we'll have some public hearings in August. Do we wanna add that to August meeting, or do you?
What do we have to do with this?
That's it. I just have to pull the old findings and facts for the last, because when that, when the North Forty was originally designed in the plans, it was for no on-street parking.
And it's just never been enforced, right?
It's, we've never, well, it's not enforceable because we can't, we don't have those streets in the code, so basically, that's just an addition.
Is that an ordinance or resolution?
It is an ordinance because it's a text change to that. So, are you okay with, it's gonna be some long August?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll set the first hearing for our August meeting. Oh, I was... That one, honestly, it's kind of like the marijuana, we're gonna have to do another reading to adapt. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Changes to cover all other areas, because in the zoning code, it also refers specifically to medical, so we're gonna have to fix that as well.
Yeah.
And this probably should have been lumped in with the original, or just doing some cleanup. Okay, so we'll set that first reading for the August meeting. Alright. Scheduled matters, first one.
I move to approve Resolution 575-2022, a resolution of intent by the Town, Ennis Town Commission to amend Town Code 10 Water Insure to provide a definition of bulk water for the purpose of implementing a fee schedule for the sale of bulk water.
Second.
Public discussion. Hi, Jack. Do you have any public comment on that?
I'm, I'm waiting for the...
Okay. We're, see, I told you I'd put it on here. Alright, any public comment from online regarding Resolution 575, defining bulk water to implement fee schedule? Last call for public comment? Closing public comment, Commissioner, comment. We're there. We're good.
We just kind of skipped it last time, it should have been done last time, but...
Yeah.
This is official.
Any other? So I'm calling the vote. Last time it was Christie, it was, now it's you, Cory.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Resolution 575-2022 passes.
It's gonna be our water money.
Eric, can you update streets and street maintenance?
So. First update, we need to get the accelerator out. It seems to be doing really well except for the, your, what I said, so long. My thought is to fix that up and get it out on a regular basis from now on. The papers are scheduled to be here, the asphalt, it's scheduled to be here beginning of August, starting on a number of roads. We're gonna pave everything leading up to school that's not paved, there's stuff, and then have, we have either head turnout on Highway 28, that's gonna get repaired and rebuilt.
Do you have to be?
Yep.
So it'll be wider?
Yes.
The culvert will be wider, so that'll, yeah, so I won't have to hit that giant pile.
Okay.
Culvert actually could be like fifty-five, obviously.
No.
No.
I'm not even gonna go there, you know, I'm not an asphalt guy, I'm not my first year of this kind of stuff, but I don't see a danger. You know, there are other routes, yeah, they're, while it gets done. We're putting a hold on Conley, because they're also requiring a culvert there, but they're drainage nowhere, so it's kind of a, they're going to skate back and forth right now. Uh, we have two catches to fix on First Street, it's probably gonna end up being a big square hole, and then we're gonna second cut, that's our holding. And then most of, if not all, the Bodis Street will be fixed. That's all from the contractors getting together and doing what they gotta do. And also, we were, we need a new plow truck, off of this.
The street maintenance district funds?
Every lot pays so much whether or not you have a house or it's empty, industry pay.
What year is our sanding truck?
Seventy, seventy-something.
Isn't it a nineteen?
Is that the red one that was so perfect that you didn't wanna get rid of? It's fine, I'm just too tired.
Can we blow it up? No.
No, it's gotta be that. We don't have a choice. We need a new plow truck now, that's, you know.
Thanks.
Speaking of plowing, I have a whole other thing. I'm concerned with where the plow, you know, I wanna talk.
The box blade is limited. We need to upgrade into something that's actually functional for the job that it's doing. Okay, what else? So that's pretty much where you're at for, your plan for the streets for this year.
For this year, we do, I do also wanna get out, when it gets time, do a lot of tracks still in town. We have the equipment to do it, or if it's real shady and it's older than the truck.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe one or two, Jack Fields, as you may know. On the maintenance, I'm saying, blacktopping the streets leading up to the school, that includes what, the one Conley Way west, outward, the B and B Tire Shop, and the on, I'm sorry?
That escher right up, so it's cool.
It could be, I don't know. I know that that's a, at this point, going from Conley Way, I believe, out to the Wandermap, that, that's a five-mile, mile a road. Now, it does cut down on the speed, I'm sure, and same, I think it's Conley West on Hugel, that's another five-mile, mile a road, but will the maintenance of blacktop include, or even a lane?
I'm from Conley to the school, so from...
Just these.
So Conley East, so not Conley West.
Yeah, it's not, okay, I'm, and I got, is it MS? Whatever that, I can't... It's, what, first, that is that, first, uh, going south, when they leave the town offices? Anybody?
The one where ECCS is? That's Stevens.
That's Conley.
Yes.
Conley.
Okay, but if you go Conley and then to your right, just to the west, the, the street again, that's where we're...
By the church?
Going...
By the church?
No, it's, it's beyond church, it's the, I believe it would be West Street.
But that doesn't hurt.
Jack, it's just the two roads from Conley going to the school.
Wandermap and get...
Yeah, but those aren't gonna be paved that way. They're just gonna be paved towards the school.
Okay, so, well, then is there even going to be any type of maintenance down that?
He's...
Get the accelerator out, it couldn't sit in front of the wall, so we're gonna have to get some, we've already had, that's pretty good with it. We waited so long, we ended up talking a lot of, I do, my plan is to put that piece of equipment into use on a regular basis, where it would take two hours to do that. Not three days, because we're waiting all year. That is my plan for the two roads in town. If there are empty lots on a road, we're not gonna pay those yet. As they pay them, they start doing their street cuts, putting in the water.
You're backtracking.
Kind of backtracks. And also, what I found out, adding to that, if there are valves or the water lines on those roads, and not paid, I tell the power to put it either. Valves have been my biggest nightmare this year, and I've not paid them. I've dug up six valves that were just paid over. And done this month.
Last month.
Last month. I don't think, I'm curious, has it been satisfied with it in his town?
Okay.
So didn't, Eric, didn't we have an agreement with the county previously? They were grading all of our roads in town and then
You guys worked on that and argue with them?
I got that done yesterday.
If not
We're reviewing it on Monday.
I really would like to get to where we're just in town, and we can handle it. Because I can count on me.
So we're working on the final written, there was always a verbal understanding, so now they've asked for a written memorandum, and James has reviewed this and has given me some notes for my draft, and I will address those this weekend and then meet with Heckler on Monday. That's where that's at.
Is that street still different?
No, it is, um, well, it's area specific, so within our planning district is the area, effective area. So you can read it.
Road maintenance.
Yes.
What about lead maintenance in Conley? Does anyone have a contract with the town that has?
We don't have a contract, we haven't had that. I, one of us, all of us have good licenses.
Yeah.
It's not beneficial to hire it out?
The money is
All in-house.
The money is pretty small in that, uh,
Okay.
But that's something that we'll have to do. You know, as far as not moving and all that, I don't know.
Because they have the equipment and everything, right?
Yeah, that's, that's their, that's their mission.
And they're trained. So you want me to check on that on Monday as well, is what you're saying?
Do that, I got it.
Okay.
You got enough, I got it.
I love this teamwork.
What else? What's your other street?
Thinking ourselves, if there's enough money, I want to get Berza from Armitage either head street then, that's basically the last street in town that's fully developed.
Fully developed.
Ready to go. But to give you an idea of cost, that's roughly close to ninety thousand dollars.
Just for that street alone.
So we're moving along in no bits, no bits, we're gonna take away at it.
Okay.
There's stuff in the chat box, Ginger, are you reading it?
The water and everything is going, right? Like, are we, yeah, are we gonna be posting more of these?
Yes.
Or read the other word? Or repair, I have at least four titles that have, you know, every place was.
Okay, so in the near future, there will be more progress on the road.
Unfortunately, the valves in this town, when they build, the system poor. That's going on, and we can add more in. That's pretty much a first. All that. You're shutting up streets of Conley to get their water to stop on first streets before, that's
So you're just adding more valves as you dig stuff up right now?
If you have to start a project and tear up the street anyway to replace a hydrant.
Put a valve in.
And if you read, if you feel like having a really nice read, you can read the last full water purr, it's a binder in Eric's office like that, it identified that intersection as needing two more valves. It's got quite a few of the ones that we tackled this summer are already in that old tenure plan.
Two on bagging and first, but without one to third and bagging, and putting two little in there.
So the long-term plan is to get it so that we can do two-street turnoffs at a time for repairs. That's where we're at.
Long-term, I want to do half-streets, valves, whatever.
How long are you planning on being here? I'm kidding. All right, so there's our update. If you have any other questions, Jack, that's your guy to talk to. All right. Onto Resolution 577, Resolution authorizing participation in the short-term investment pool. STIP, Montana Board of Investments. Ginger, this is yours to present.
On Monday? All right, so we, we do use the short-term investment pool pad for years. Um, typically, that's where, I mean, we're limited where we want to invest our money. So typically, they have the best interest rate, so we just kind of stick with them. It's located in Calona. So this is actually updating to get Nikki on as mayor, um, so that she has authority to oversee this and do things if necessary.
Okay.
I move to approve Resolution 575-2022.
Second. Public comment? Second call for public comment on Resolution 577-2022, STIP investment. Last call for public comment on Resolution 577-2022. Seeing no other public comment, public comment closed. Commissioner, comment? Got anything?
I kind of missed it.
I just don't know what it is.
Yeah, none of us, I asked earlier if I was supposed to know what it was.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, um, so it's a state-run investment pool that cities and towns and state agencies all, I mean, they put their money into it. Um, it's a legal interest-bearing account that we can use, because towns are, are limited in where you can invest money. So, and this is a safe one, we have, um, about two million eight hundred thousand in there in that, in that range. We as the state, or we as Innis? As Innis, that is
Is it Public Works money or is it our money?
Um, it's, it's mostly Public Works money.
That's my figure.
But in order to get the interest on it, you know, to gain some interest, um, the interest monies are split out as to, uh, it's general fund. Um, the library has, um, a savings account, but they only, I mean, it's not, but to give them the best interest, too, I put theirs in with her as well, and then water and sewer.
Okay.
Um, banks cover us up in two hundred thirty thousand dollars in interest. We can put money into STIP and we don't have to worry about it, I mean, it's all insured. Um, so that's another thing from the auditors. So it's, it's like a state investment pool, you put your money in and then they to get better interest rates, the interest rates just started coming back up again now. Um, this month we got roughly twenty-four hundred dollars in interest. Or the month of June. Um, and again, I mean, anytime you guys want to come in and go through financials or, you know, look at what we've got, please do so.
All right, any other?
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, no, that was very helpful, yeah.
All right, any other questions from council?
And this is, yeah, this is just to add your name.
Correct, giving me authority.
Yeah, we change, change it because now she has the authority.
That's not one of those things where we just change. We did have to do it for like bank signature and not pre-approved, but that's so that everybody can actually have a paycheck when I start, or else there's, there's a revolt. But this investment pool is specific in creating the authorization cards. All right, any other?
Do we actually make a motion?
Nope, they already did it. So now we're back to you.
Aye.
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 All right. Resolution 577-2022, STIP investments has been approved. All right, so
Is Karen, are you online?
She
She texted me earlier and said, can you call, I'll call in for the agenda item, and then I'm like, hey, you're almost up.
She said phone.
I know, she said phone, what does that mean? She wants to call?
Is she on there? Maybe she's calling one or two.
Karen, are you online? I'm not hearing Karen. All right, do
Do we need her?
Do you remember this?
Yeah, it's all the stuff we went over, right?
So this was, um, MMIA saying library boards are unique and that we kind of share, or libraries, we share responsibility while they are ensuring they want the ability for the town to oversee and make sure that they're adhering to town policy. And so that's kind of where this came from. Um, James, or well, I guess, public comment first would be.
Okay. She can hear us, but we can't hear her, but you never unmuted yourself.
If she's on the phone, I think you have to push six or something to unmute.
You have to push six or something to unmute, is what Brittany said.
Try four.
Try four or two, she's just keeping shooting out numbers because she's pregnant.
Like, usually it tells me when to get on.
She said it should have told you when you got on, how to unmute.
Can you undo the
What color are you?
It doesn't let you unmute the colors.
Frustration.
Eric, maybe hang up and then just dial back in.
Dave.
Did you hear, Ginger? Hang up and call back in.
How is she on the phone?
I don't know, that's why. Appreciate it, me maybe call back.
All right, we lost caller two, so maybe we'll get caller two back. But it should be Karen.
Hopefully.
So do we have to approve this or are we just?
Yes.
MMIA and the State Library, yeah, wrote this, so, and then when Karen, and then Karen worked on it some
She worked, helped them some, yeah.
And, and then brought it back in, and it went through, um, a final review of MMIA. Um, and they sent back just a few wording changes, and then, so MMIA and the Dr. Karen, they're both satisfied with it.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
We have, thank you.
All right, Karen, what do you have for this memorandum, comments on it?
So all I have, I actually don't have all, any comments. Um, changes were made between MMIA, uh, Ginger worked on it, I worked on it, the board read through it, it's been approved by the library board. Um, do you have any questions for me?
No, I don't. I do not.
My, I guess my one comment is that, just to, just to point out that we do have a year, you know, this is a new MOU, you know, the term is a year, if we all agree and are happy on it, it will roll over, we can agree and be happy with it again, any proposed changes need to be agreed upon by both parties, but in my opinion, everything looks sound.
Perfect, thank you, Karen.
I move to adopt memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the Town of Innis and Madison Valley Public Library.
You didn't ask my permission.
Oh, sorry, Bones.
She may make a motion, and she so chooses to make a motion?
Yeah, no, I'm only, I'm only teasing. Um, the only issue I have, and I sent a comment to, uh, Mayor Nikki, is about the employees. Uh, first of all, let me just say, number one, I think that the agreement is very comprehensive, and the Exhibit A, which appears at like page forty in the attachments that I received, uh, page forty is like Exhibit A, and it's like numbered one through eleven about all the policies and and the compliance with all these policies that apparently exist in our employee handbook. But the only part that I seem to have, uh, issue, there appears to be like a conflict regarding the, the employee hiring and supervision. So if they are in fact, if the library employees are employees of the town, that falls within the mayor's jurisdiction. To appoint, suspend, and remove all employees.
It is, that, I think that is true, but it's also within Montana code annotated that the library board supervises the library director.
Well, you could supervise a library director in a certain capacity, but I don't see that we can by, uh, a memorandum of understanding repeal or replace or supersede Chapter Seven of our charter in Town Code.
So what would you suggest?
Well, what I'd suggest is just to bring into conformity any of the provisions about hiring, uh, employees and that, you know, you could put in here something like, to the extent that nothing herein shall supersede Chapter Seven of the mayor's authority to supervise, appoint, uh, suspend, and remove employees, since they are now employees of the town. You, you can't have two independent authorities supervising employees. If they're employees, they're subject to the mayor's authority and jurisdiction. So that makes sense?
I think, yeah, I'm thinking about that.
Other than that, and I would like to see a provision in there that assures that any employees of the town, uh, I'm sorry, of the library, which are in fact employees of the town, that they do in fact uh, receive all mandatory training and execute and acknowledge receipt of the the Innis Town Employee Handbook. So that's, that's gotta be in there.
Isn't that, isn't that the same as policies? Isn't that identified in there somewhere? The handbook isn't necessarily policy stated, but policies are listed within the handbook.
Correct.
I'm not sure what
I'm okay with
The word handbook in there? Do you want the word handbook in there?
It says Town of Ennis Policy 5 Point 1. That's the same, right?
Yeah, the library employees are employees of the town, and they acknowledge and understand that as employees of the town, all applicable town policies shall apply, including but not limited to town personnel policies. And that's in our...
That would be the employee policies.
Yeah.
So it's covered.
And where's that Ginger?
5 Point C. 1.
And it goes on to state that the library must notify the town in any changes, so technically Mayor Nikki is still in charge of the employees.
So, I'm not saying that you necessarily have to make any changes to 5 Point C. 1, but I mean, from an administrative standpoint Ginger, you have to, or, and Nikki, you have to make sure that 5 Point C. 1 is actually implemented. It's, it's one thing to say that they're employees, and the, and the parties, here the parties are the library board and the Town of Ennis. You acknowledge that, but you have to actually implement that by requiring all of those library employees to undergo the same mandatory training as any other employee of the town, and to sign and acknowledge receipt of the employee manual and all of the policies that are contained therein.
Correct.
Okay, that's my comment.
Thank you, James.
Alright, alright.
Alright. Where this is a one-year document, and it's brand-new to this requirement for MMIA.
To everybody.
To everybody. I think as the year progresses, a lot of libraries, I mean, everybody's been talking about it. I've talked to people from Dillard, all over the state. It was like explosion. I think there's going to be a lot of these with a little bit of tweaking in the year. That's kind of my standpoint on that. It's a work in progress.
Roll with it and see what happens.
Any other comment? So Christie got part of a motion in.
I'm moved to adopt memorandum of understanding between the Town of Ennis and Madison Valley Public Library.
Second. Alright, public comment.
Sorry for not asking James, but...
And anything from online for a public comment? Last call for public comment. Commissioners. Any other discussion points? Nope. Nothing from staff, so you and I just need to verify receipt of... And it'll be good timing because also our handbook needs vastly updated. And Karen's already got some great notes that she was taking, and we're, that's my winter plan, is to work through that painful document after budget. I said winter plan. That is deep winter. Alright, so, any other?
So, Christie, were you going to amend your motion to include the suggestions I made that it be amended just to the extent that nothing herein shall supersede Chapter 7 or the mayor's responsibility to supervise, appoint, and suspend employees?
Not at this time.
Oh.
Karen, you're... How do you feel about that amendment to this document?
So, I, I understand the comment, and, um, my, you know, my only concern is, that is not even a concern. You know, a big part of this document was discerning the difference between the role of the library board while, you know, while library employees are still town employees. So, um, the comment about not superseding, et cetera, as long as that doesn't conflict with the library board's roles and responsibilities.
You can't have both. You can't, you cannot have the library board has the authority for hiring, appointment, and termination when that in fact is the role of the mayor. So, I mean, you can't, you can't have both. If they're employees of the town, they are subject to the mayor's authority. That's an obvious conflict right here.
So I don't have, I don't have, I don't have any concerns about that statement. I guess, yeah, like I said, I keep going back to the fact that as long as there, there is no, there is no conflict between, between authority, between the board's authority and the mayor's authority.
Okay, so what I would suggest then is a very brief amendment to 5 Point C. 2, and then at the end of that sentence, it would be put con, you put a comma there, and you would insert "subject to mayor of the Town of Ennis authority."
Repeat that again, a comma, "subject..."
Subject to...
Yeah, but how, how does this all work? If you have a library board, and those people hire and fire the library people, and now you're saying the mayor has to...
Well, the mayor's...
They work together?
The mayor's the ultimate authority, though.
But if something happens at the library, isn't the library board going to notify the mayor and work with the mayor on this? That's why I don't know why there's going to be like a conflict of interest.
And we use the same HR resources, so... I don't, I mean, we put that in there, and I think it's... And it does give a final definition.
Oh, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I thought I lost you.
I mean, you could just insert the word, the library board shall have the authority and responsibility for recommending to the mayor hiring, appointment, termination, and disciplinary proceedings.
Yeah, and I don't have, so, so the only thing I would want to check on, and maybe someone could help me out, because my service here is sketchy, is, is the actual verbiage of Montana Code annotated. So there, so like I said, so there aren't any conflicts. I completely understand where you're coming from, and I think there's a solution here, but without having the verbiage in front of me, and I apologize for that. I'm not sure about that addition.
I think you're referring to 221310 of the...
So if the library board oversees according to Montana Code, then the town could not supersede Montana Code in its... In its wording. Correct?
Well, 221310 of the Montana Code...
Yeah, with the recommendations of the chief library and the board shall employ and discharge such other persons as may be necessary in the administration of the affairs of the library, fix and pay the salaries, compensation, and prescribe their duties. I don't...
Yeah, and this might, this might only refer to, I mean, this might be for state. Yeah, this is, this is referring to state libraries.
So, with that, if MMIA has reviewed this document, and they have, back and forth, and they see no deficiencies, then I am very okay with it, and...
If you try and research this more or ask the questions, can't you make an amendment to an MOU if necessary?
Yes, we can, and that's why I was saying, with this being the first year of this part required, I imagine that all the towns are going to go through this, and we see some sharing of refinement in the next year. And I am perfectly okay with the way this document sits.
And, and I'm, and I'm happy to work on that, you know, in the meantime, as, as well.
Karen, do you know if the NS Public Library, is it established as a territory of the county?
No, it's under the municipality.
So I don't even know that Title 22 applies. I mean, this is regarding countywide and statewide libraries. You know, my suggestion, I'll just say it again, I just think that you should have some language in the, in the memorandum that states, "Nothing herein shall supersede the authority of the mayor to supervise employees as provided in Chapter 7, and any conflict shall be resolved in favor of the NS Town Code." Okay? Because we are a self-governing entity. So if you could bring yourself to add that to this, and I would sign off on it. I mean, I'll sign off on it as to form, but I'd feel more comfortable if you had that further language in there.
So, yeah, so again, I hear what you're saying. I would just, I'm getting a lot of feedback. I would want to accommodate that. I would want a little time to sort that out. So, so I'm pleased.
Okay.
So Karen, what?
Is on the table.
James?
Yes?
Would you mind sending that via an email to Nikki and I? And then I'll hand it to Karen.
And Karen.
Yeah, and have you got Karen's email?
I'll, I'll send it to you, and you can forward it to Karen.
Okay. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, that would be great, thank you.
Okay. So I make a motion to table?
Do we have a deadline on this? Wait, do we have a deadline? We have to, yes, it needs to go through.
That's why I say we approve it the way it is, and amend it if we need to amend it after we do more research.
I agree.
That makes sense.
Sorry, James.
Thank you.
Alright, so there's a motion. And a second, any other discussion? Alright.
Europe?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks Karen.
Thank you, James.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Karen, you want to do the library report?
Karen, while you, we can still hear you, you want to do the library report?
Yep, I'm still here, I'm still here. So you have my written report. I just, yeah, I just want to say that things are going very well, very busy. I just, I was in Helena today for a strategic foresight planning session with this, with the state from the future school. It was, you know, all good things, and I'm excited to bring it back to the library to, you know, talk about zero to five, five to 10, and 10 to 20 year plans moving forward. Do you have any questions for me?
Nope, I've heard that you've been super busy, and it's been awesome.
It has, yeah, it has. We, we love being busy, and I think it's, I think it's all going really well.
Alright, that's all Karen, thank you so much.
Thank you all, I appreciate you.
On to law enforcement, you have my written report. Any questions, any comments, my door is always open.
I have an off, I mean, kind of on that, can I ask a question? I don't know when I can ask.
Yeah.
Whenever you want.
How come he doesn't come? All of our public works people, Karen comes.
I can require it of him.
I mean, I just think it's interesting that he, I haven't seen him here yet once, but I don't care either, I'm just questioning.
Okay.
But I don't think you need to require him.
I asked him to come after changeover and everything. I did ask him back.
And Suzie's really good about coming, like...
And it depends on the night, and what the requirements are. We can, if you want to. I can ask him to come to August. I also look at, and I don't know if you guys pay attention to like claims, and that's part of like why I started doing voting during public hearing. If you actually break down like Forrest's appearance on an hourly, and some of everybody's on an hourly, it's not...
We have to pay him to be here, they can't just come for free.
Yeah, we get to come, you get to come for your awesome part. So, time management, resource management, and do, is it more effective for them to be here, or is it more effective for them to be in other areas? I knew Eric tonight
Roger, I didn't.
Was going to be required for public works and pre-treat. I don't always make him come.
Right.
So...
Okay, that makes sense.
In regards to law enforcement personnel, would it be possible, like that part of the plan of having two officers was to enforce town ordinance? And so, is it, would it be possible for them to do that in regards to, yeah, stuff that is very obvious to take, die, junk cars, those types of things?
They have been doing some, as there is a complaint they address and go to town on it.
Look at all the complaints. And that, and they just see that, because I thought that was part of the, you know, having additional officers to enforce those things. I'm just saying between neighbors, something, I mean, maybe left front end, but there is something that blatantly obviously, you know, that, or blatantly obvious that, you know, is against, you know, say junk car, for instance, or several junk cars on one particular lot. I don't think it's necessarily that the neighbor needs to make a complaint if it's clearly obvious that it's a violation of ordinance.
I can have that discussion with the department. And right now, it feels like they've, I, I don't know if you've watched court, but they've been more than busy, and Suzie has been enjoying the fact that they have been more than busy, and so has court. So, there's that too. And we, and that was something I never thought of when we added the second officer, was the amount of time that that put into the court system. So, while we're at this peak of growth, we're also at a peak of court with one person that shares those duties. Just so that we're all aware, long-term, that might be, get a little bit interesting. Alright.
Suggesting that there's more criminals out there, or you didn't know about?
I'm just...
Suggesting two officers writes a lot more tickets than one.
That's exactly what I'm saying, two more than one. So if you don't, you can have all the officers in the world, but if you don't have the backup portion, then you still got nothing. Alright, so I will ask officers to look into some ordinance.
Can I ask a stupid question? Would lawn care or lack of, would that be part of the ordinance?
Yeah, if you have an empty lot in front of your house, and it's this high, or even a low, big, or...
They're actually waiting on me, on the list.
Oh, I was like, can I drive around and make a list?
But what if it's not?
So it's for fire and weed control.
Yes, yes. Okay.
So that's where that's at.
That's good, I just, thank you. Huge.
I've paid several already.
So they're on the radar. Okay, public works.
I feel like maybe with the weed letter thing, another one of those...
I feel like maybe with the weed letter thing, another one of those items that is very time consuming to me. And perhaps there could be something put into ordinance or something that feels like once you've been pulled three years in a row that you need to mow by July 1st, that we're no longer going to mail you a letter and, you know.
Mail you a fine?
Yeah. And just do it. Just mow their lawn and send them a bill.
Ignorance is no excuse.
Yeah. See, people know it's the rule and it's like, it hasn't happened because Eric doesn't have time and I don't have time to find all the homework.
Right.
On the natural, because they changed and sold and bought and, you know, and then all that.
And so what I see is keeping up with that, I guess, maybe if a new homeowner comes in, Brittany, is there a way to be a angle to give a weed letter the next year?
I have no idea who the open lots are, or, I mean, that's why public works has to tell us to, you know. Yeah. I mean, but then that, you know, that time on, you know that.
I always got, before I did my landscaping, I always got a letter, I think it was from the town, saying that I have to spray for not just weeds and stuff.
Well, I think, sorry, um, pardon me, because my in-laws have been in their home several years and I think they were just maybe on the default list, you know, because they keep their yard and they would get a letter, you know, quite, you know, every year, you know. It's just default lists across, I know.
Right, but like, why are we sending a letter every single year?
I think it should just be if you're.
Why are we sending a business renewal every year? Businesses know they need to renew it. Very time consuming. Um, why would, if we do, to make it so that it's still noticed, you could do just public notice of it. We could just do that instead of mailing it out and then it still covers the whole thing without sending out each one of them?
It would also be a credit savings on.
Way less work. Way less work. Look at that. And then you don't even have to rewrite the whole town.
But then if, if it's much of a request upper page or.
Yes. It's still, I mean.
It's cheaper than postage in my time. It's just envelope.
Perfect. I love it. That's the new plan.
But then what happens then? Like failure to, then is it forcible by?
Hourly.
So like.
Yep.
Lots.
Okay. And that would be in the notice that if you don't have it done by this date, then it's kind of seventy-five dollars an hour for public works to mow your.
And I think if we're making it.
Which is exactly what the letter says.
Yeah, that's way more effective. And then posting it on the town site.
Yep. A reader board.
All of that. Okay.
We're gonna just keep talking about the reader board every week.
All right, public works. You got his report? The pictures? You'd do without the pictures? Was.
Ew, ew. Yeah.
I saw it happen. But that thing happened and we got rid of it.
It's kind of gross, dude.
If anything, if it happened to me this year, it was that. You would honestly would have never found.
I'm loving your glass half-full attitude.
You would have never found that.
Where was there else? Are there? Where is this at? Okay.
Yep.
Right by Brittany's house.
I don't think my water tastes great. I don't understand.
All right. So yeah, you guys got the fact that there's more, more on the list.
There is.
Yeah.
I have a weed detector coming for twenty-six. They'll be here for three days. We're gonna do the whole town.
City of Bozeman again? I saw it on the claims. Or did you find somebody different? Sweet.
Same guy. Years they brought it, they're coming in.
How far out are we noticing this? I mean, it's. Coming days. Are you posting to get people to notice that it's gonna happen?
We've passed. It's not.
Oh, no. No, but I mean, like for the rest of the summer for show officer.
I'm, I'm gonna try to stick to a weekend of the actual thing, but. It's not.
Yeah.
You know.
All right. Any other questions for Eric? Suzie, you're up.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yay. I can hear you guys so good tonight, too. It's awesome. So I, I really failed. I did not get a written report in and I apologize. So, um, I can tell you it hasn't slowed down. We do have, um, some of the old ones moving forward with, um, the meeting, first meeting in August. So that's the news. Riverside was going to be on there, but I think they're gonna request, um, to table it, but they'll let me know through tomorrow. And so we made our attempt to put them on there. And, um, Moen, the car wash, and, um, the Pearl Street address is going with a board of adjustments. August, I don't know, Ginger might remember. I can't remember right now. I think it's the second or the. So, um, anyway, we're making progress there, moving the older ones out of the pew. So, and lots of new ones moving in. Do you guys have any questions for me?
The variance for Pippin, is that scheduled correct?
It is.
For the zoning board?
Oh, yeah. Did I say it wrong?
You said, uh, the one oh five Pearl.
The car wash doesn't come before the board of adjustments. It goes to you guys. I said it incorrect.
So.
So Heckler and Pippin on August 2nd.
Is it Heckler and Pippin on August 2nd for the zoning board?
Or variance, yes.
Okay. That was that. And then conditional uses, are there any other that are coming up?
Not that I have right now, other than the car wash.
Okay. And that will, we're pairing the second reading of text amendment with that conditional use, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
You got that from Brittany?
Yes, we're on it. Working on it. Or where is that?
I'm sorry.
Nikki?
Has.
Mr. Michael. I think she can hear you.
Has, um, Moen's attorney sent the zoning text change documents?
Yes.
Okay, so we can have those, because we're trying to accommodate and having a meeting July?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. So can we have those soon?
Yes, they're actually printed on the table in the office, but, um, I will make sure, um, I'll be in Monday. So I'll make sure that we get copies for the council, for the text amendment for both of them and the conditional use.
Awesome. That's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Um, I got a question, uh, regarding the Riverside. So what they're, what they're proposing right, or asking for right now, is that another zoning, um, text amendment is what we're in the, is kind of in the works right now? Is that what's happening for the, uh, the RV park?
Correct. Yes.
And that, uh, what is, so is that regarding the, what, what type of, uh, business you can put in that area? Is, is basically RV parks are not included in that, in that zoning designation and that's, uh, we're, what, what does the text amendment look like? Does it say to include RV parks as well?
It does. And that, and that one particular, um, zone, it does. Because right now RV parks are not allowed in any of our zoning.
Other than ten acre?
Yes, that's correct.
Parcels. So, so this piece of this, this is the precursor to the sixty acre or?
Seventy.
Subdivision.
But we have to handle them entirely separate. We cannot mingle the two. When we go to zoning text, that is, the discussion is strictly that text amendment. There will be no crossing.
And that comes to us, does it?
It's no different than the car wash. Asking for a.
So what's on there right now is in the, um, local L C R, local partial residential. And all they're asking is be for conditional use to include recreational vehicle park. That's what their text amendment includes.
And we can say no because of our lagoon and our system.
We can look at it.
Yeah.
We'll have to look at it and look and see where it fits as far as all the zoning intent and purpose, where it fits into the new master plan, all of that. Have to be accommodated.
So, uh, all of the, are, all of the properties adjacent to this new subdivision are, uh, oh, re, or they residential or a combination of, uh, commercial as well?
It's all residential. Um, I mean, they have to go. Um, this, they've broken down into basically like three different sections. They still have to go through the annexation process, but I think what they're trying to do is to decide if this is even what they're going to do, if they're gonna pull the plug on the project, if the council and the town decides this is something they don't want to even entertain. Um, that's from my get. Forrest has done most of the dealings on this project.
When do we get to see some of the paperwork from this project?
Um, well, anytime you'd like, um. Cory's got.
I have a thumb drive that I still haven't looked at yet.
All you have to do is ask.
Okay.
Um, um, yeah, I guess, just, uh, so we have, we currently have, so we have the car wash. We've done zoning text change on, now we have.
We have not done, but we're looking at.
We're looking at doing. And then this one, we're also looking at doing zoning text change potentially. Seems like we're getting a lot of these, like, hey, we got a better idea of what to do.
If you look in the zoning section, though, there is a document for zoning text change. Everything says, we recognize that there may be a need in the future for.
Something.
Adapt, an adaptive policy. So as long as it conforms to the rest of the intent and purpose and other comments along with staff, then they've put in for the application for a text change, which is allowed by our code. So we look at them. That's the process.
True. And it's a case by case scenario, right?
Uh huh.
Sure.
I know. I was like, how do we charge on this? And what do we charge?
Five hundred.
Suzie, can you answer that question?
It's five hundred.
Okay.
For a, for a text amendment?
Application.
Oh, cool. Okay.
And there's no refund on that or anything? It's just five hundred. Straight.
Correct, Suzie? No refund?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Suzie? All right. Thanks, Suzie.
You're welcome.
Brittany?
Yes, hello. Um, okay, so verbal report as well. Some of the things that I most recently worked on, um, getting the alerting system. Getting the alerting system set up, um, which we've had amazing feedback on. It's been well received, uh, that people are happy to be informed, whether it affects them or not. They're glad to know. So if you're, what?
I was just saying the water shutups and everything, the alerting system.
Okay. Um, so yeah, if you, if anyone out there is not getting the alerts, please, you know, contact town hall because we're only using information that we had in our utility account system. Um, yeah, so that's been well received. And I've had a lot of people be like, you know, hey, I want to add my husband. I, I got the text, but he didn't. Or I, you know, I want it to go to my email as well. So that has been a wonderful option, especially given the, the public works, uh, situation to be able to get information out for boil orders or that type of thing. Um, the, I did some publications for the marijuana business license and the utility fees. Um, and then I worked on, of course, getting out new business, creating a new business license application, kind of updating it, adding more information that we'd like to collect from businesses, um, and then putting together kind of a packet for short-term rentals so that, because they have a checklist to fill out and plus, we're asking them to provide their county and state requirements. So, um, making sure that I'm up to date on what is required of them. And that way, when they ask questions, I've got examples of what their permits look like for sales and use tax and, um, the county sanitarian inspections and such. So, um, worked a little bit with the county on that to make sure that, you know, they're providing me up-to-date lists when people do get their inspections done. And I'm just kind of coordinating efforts there. Um, all of that is on the website. So now, under departments and info, there's like a business and event info page where all of that is. I tried to condense it and make it easy for people to find, um, and be able to print off exactly what they need. Um, updating minutes on the website and, um, I did post today, uh, because I was reading through the minutes and reminded myself that the fee schedule that was passed for utility services last month. I put that on the website just as it was the resolution, but just as an F Y I for people. Um, and I have been verbally telling folks that are continuously, you know, they pay every other month or something like, hey, if you want to save 10 bucks this next month, you know, start paying your bill every month. Because there is a new fee schedule out there. So, um, I'm sure this next month, or in the next couple of weeks, when I do, um, process those fees, I'm sure there will be questions and upset folks, but, um, I'll work through those as they come if they were not, um, aware that, that the fee schedule is changing. Um, and then just been working on issuing business licenses. So, so far, I've done a hundred and eight of them. We ma, I'm hand mailed out four hundred and ten, so about a quarter of the way through. Of course, not all of those necessarily are still in business or come to N S for business or whatever. So, um, I'm not sure how many we'll have to, we'll get back, but I'll look at last year's and kind of compare and figure out a, a way to keep track of that. Because right now, our system doesn't really let us know when someone expires or, you know, I mean, everyone expires seven one, but essentially, when I put in a new license, it doesn't notify me.
They have like a thirty day grace period until they have a month to pay?
You're delinquent with an additional fee August 1st. So. Yep. Um, and then I've been emailing business licenses, which people have been very thankful for, um, you know, just to get it quicker and not have to wait on mail and not have to stuff envelopes and spend money on postage and paper. So, um, I'm hoping next year, when this comes around, I'm, what I'm planning to do is send out maybe a notice in the paper and email notices as a reminder rather than four hundred, you know, applications. It just takes a lot of time to do that. So, you know, like people, you know, are using technology more and it's, you are in a huge city, they don't mail out 10,000 business license renewals. So bringing us to the 21st century a little bit.
Could it go on the website? Like, could it?
Yeah. And I did do that this year. I, you know, did a reminder on the website, but if you're not looking for it or get the reminders, then.
Could you put the application on the website?
It's on there. Yeah, it's on that page, business and event info, applications on there. And yeah, so. Yeah. Any questions for me? Yeah, I mean, the alert system is just for utility accounts. And I mean, we could, but it costs and I can't really filter out. Like, it just sends to everyone. and I can't really filter out, like, it just sends to everyone without creating.
And I don't want to use, I will not use that system for anything other than that, for the reason of it grabs the attention and it is a public safety, acknowledging that you must boil, and when we're lifting it, and that that is an infrastructure service.
Um, I have a question. How many short-term rental licenses did you, that's it?
I've gotten two fully complete, and I've given, given them their license. I've gotten a lot of calls of people that didn't know that they had to have their inspection done by the county, or were even paying taxes.
But they still have to pay that delinquent if they're late, right?
I told them that, you know, we understand that this is the first time that you're having to actually, like, check these boxes, so we're giving you some grace period.
But they've never been inspected by the county. That should be yearly, right, the county?
Um, I don't.
Or is it once just to open?
Mm-hmm. It's once, and yeah, so.
I feel like we should also go address putting a cap on them too, because if there's so many.
I don't think you can have them at this point.
Is it too late to, yeah?
That's, that would be in zoning.
Yeah.
Which will be a fun, not this year project.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for Brittany?
Nope, thank you for everything.
Ginger.
Okay, so you have mine written. So the water claims were kind of interesting. But we did, as Josie on here, we ended up, and, um, we haven't heard back from MMIA yet on the final decision. Eric, you haven't heard anything, have you?
No, I haven't.
Okay, I haven't gotten anything either. Um, so those are still pending.
For, for what?
Um, we had water claims, probably when the water went down, there was something called the water dam. Um, so we had people that have already whose, um, going on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, and we had one prior, or two prior to that.
Uh, right.
As well.
For flooding. One, one was very minor, the other, and we haven't heard on those, anything final on those either.
Okay.
Um.
It's been a few years since we've had a claim.
Yeah.
Kristi, uh, like Christine Dupre's house flooded a few years ago.
That was a tour back, I believe.
Okay.
So that was a fun tour, like, these guys.
They'd rather have water.
I clean out cleaning and checking much more often, um, especially they, they identify their trouble lines and go and check.
Every Thursday.
Every, okay, there you go.
Uh, so that, we go on a Thursday, so that something's not big.
Yeah, we have a day and a half to fix it.
Uh, other than that, uh, the last thing, on the ARCA money, um, so that, this was trench two second ARCA money that came in, it was right around a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So we have received that. Um, and then working with Great West a little bit back and forth, because there's another one that we're going to be eligible to apply for. Um, and they pretty much got everything lined out of what has to be done with that. I'm staying in touch with them. When we get the PBR done, I think we can move forward with that, because then we're going to be identif- we'll have identifying things that need to be done. So we'll, we're going to try for some more of the money as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
All right, any other questions for Ginger? All right, and then that big in the budget, so we're going to enter that. Promptly, so if there's anything else, I think we're kind of in the home stretch of fine tuning, so.
Um, yeah. We're still, we have to wait to gather taxable value before I can finish budget, because that tells us how much money we're getting. But once I do get that taxable value, then we got thirty days.
Yeah, so we're trying to get as much of it lined out as we can, and then the weight game, and then the, so it's a.
And then the mad rush to change.
To change. So we're getting there, and maybe we do just a special work session to look it over.
Yeah, well, I can send it out to, I mean, to the guy who has the project. And if it enters, I mean, I can send it out so we have time to look at it even prior to.
Okay. So if you see that, that's kind of our next hot, hot potato, and with a lot of new. You guys get to drag us through it kicking and screaming. Lucky you. All right, commission.
Yeah, that kind of needs to help my game.
It's busy season.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I don't even know what day it is sometimes, but, um, no, Cory and I talked a little bit about impact fees. I kind of wanted to reach out to you and address that, to kind of get that in the works. So, that's kind of.
So, we discussed this, right, in that if we're to do economic impact fees, we first must have a study done, right? Isn't that the process that we have to go through?
Oh, like official?
An official study.
Oh.
So, if that is a plan, then we need to find where money for that study is coming from. So I guess that would be the first place I would send you to down, is to see if there are any grants available for that, or funding, and then if there are grants, how much the match is, and then where that in the magic budget is going to occur.
Okay.
So that would be your first piece to, to go down that rabbit hole.
So it's, I think, seventy thousand dollars for a, for a study to be done, and if you get this grant set up, then they pay half, so.
So anyway, that's your first.
Okay.
I'm giving you a jumping point for getting your game rolling. But if you need help, call, email. I'm always here on Mondays, Cory comes and visits me.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to do that sometime soon.
And I hang out like after hours on Mondays for my client time, too, so I'm here like after.
Oh, I would apply here at all, spot, Monday.
I had a pile of stuff I still had to finish, anyway.
We're all here, we, Monday.
Is that when Larry Pine brought up was impact fees, when he did that public comment?
Yes.
Just.
What you got for your, your report?
Um, yeah, like Karen said, at the library board, we signed up on the, uh, MMIA form, and that's about it.
Good.
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't have much either. I don't know.
You got anything?
Okay, some people did call me and text me about hot water heaters breaking and stuff like that. I was like, you have to call the town and start.
Perfect.
This is not my department.
This is the process. That's, we'll get through it. Cory.
Um, so yeah, the tourism grant writing class, I think I'm going to attend on the twenty-seventh, and it'd be awesome if somebody else would.
What day is it? Do you know?
Wednesday.
I know. Nikki emailed us it, right?
It's your day.
I have Wednesday. Where is it?
Hold on, I'm reading the email right now.
Wait, isn't it, uh, online? No. I thought it was us.
I did forward one, but I, is that the one I did? As a reminder, yes, okay.
And then I take it, uh.
They send them out way ahead of time, and sometimes that's great, and sometimes you're like, oh, I completely forgot that that was two months ago when you sent that to me, so.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
So I sent that out Monday, when I, I try and tag them to remind them for later, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. Brittany will drag me the notification, new them some of these days.
Snooze the email.
Snooze the email, she's, we'll get through it, so. I was printing them on the table, but I don't think that's working, so.
Two PM and it looks like it's online.
Online?
It looks like it, because it doesn't say where.
I thought I saw that, so.
Webinar registration.
Yep.
Yes, webinar.
So you guys can hang out at the library and take it together.
Nice.
Not all of us.
You can if we post it for the twenty-seventh. We have plenty of time of notification, but I'm not there. Well, I'm not part of form. Good.
And then that, that grant has to be written between August first and, uh, and September fifteenth. So it has to get turned in. Um, whatever, I guess, back to the homeless thing I was going to talk about. My, I have a buddy who's lived in Portland his entire life, and he did, he had, uh, Portland actually made it legal to build structures, I'm guessing temporary structures in the parks. Um, and, uh, they've, uh, yeah, it's, it's really bad in Portland right now. They finally flushed some people out away from his house. So it is a very real thing. I didn't, just wanted, not belittling it, but I, I feel like our, our town is not super, uh, super, like, attractive place for these individuals to want to go, because there are not a lot of public, uh, structures or shelters to hang out in. Um, what else? Yeah, definitely Riverside, thinking ahead to what that actually looks like. Josh Biavich is a local lifetime resident, uh, here, he lives in Bozeman now, but, uh, he's an awesome resource, he's super honest, uh, and he's a developer, so he's a, uh, he's an individual, uh, to reach out to with questions, maybe of what he would have liked to see the North Forty look like, you know, had he known everything that he knows now. Um, what else? Um, oh, yeah. So I was, I was riding with a busload of, uh, marathoners, and I was talking to these two ladies who informed me that it was made legal in nineteen seventy-two for women to run in marathons, but it was illegal prior to that.
Seventy-two?
Nineteen seventy-two, yeah. And then I think the Olympics, what, I don't know, I, I'd have to check it out online. I think I wanted to say it was like, the first one was like in the eighty-four Olympics or something goofy like that. But I just wanted to give kudos to all of the ladies in this room for getting it done.
I don't run anywhere.
I don't run either, but yeah, good job.
Well, no, I mean, I mean, you're.
Brittany.
I'm the token guy.
I'm stopping that right now.
Right?
What else you got? We're moving, we're doing okay.
That's it, uh.
That's it?
Basically, pat on my back for being, putting up with you all too.
Yeah. Drowning in the sea. All right, uh, so I'm joining the, didn't get my, um, report typed up, but I did, and you guys can look at it, and James, like I said, is graciously looked at this memorandum of understanding and given me some, a few little things to tweak on it, um, making sure that I'm compliant with Montana code, and I'm kind of double-checking, because your local agreements and memorandum of understandings, how much are they the same thing, and how much are they a different thing? So, uh, anyway, I'll pass it around. I finished it up yesterday. Eric took a look at it, so this is for the paving portion, um, not paving, road maintenance. That's that one. Uh, the next thing on my list after our street no parkings, um, is a public records request, because we've been working on a couple of those, and we don't have an official process for that. So basically, creating ordinance of what that looks like. Um, I've got Livingston's, Bozeman's, I've got quite a few right now, working on compiling, tailoring, so that we have that process, because right now, anything, if it's time-consuming or whatever, all we have is to go off is Montana code. So who's in charge of it, what's our timeframe, how is that going to go? The application for a public records request, how do you want it? When do you want it? That whole thing. So Brittany's been digging into that a little bit with me, sending out, um, that on the listserv and gathering some up, and James has sent me some as well as John Moore. So we're trying to find a mysterious document from Virginia City that everybody says is great, so that's what I'm waiting on. We're waiting on the mystery document that I've heard is amazing. We've tried, and they have tried.
It's requested more than once.
Yes.
Well, Suzie talked about.
And Suzie talked to the old clerk. I mean, like, we're digging, we're digging deep.
We're making progress now.
We're digging deep to find that. Um, Bozeman's is big. I don't know that it needs to be nine pages of bigness, short, sweet, simple, to the point, and then some of it immediately didn't make sense to me, like, any routine records request, like minutes, there's no charge. Well, do you want the last ten years of minutes? Because that is going to need a charge. Like, so there was immediately red flags all over in Bozeman's that I was like, that's not going to work for me. So that's what I'm working on now, and then, um, so the state DES and regional DES, Disaster Emergency Services, is doing, uh, regional hazards mitigation assessment. So to be eligible for any FEMA funds, should you need them, you must participate in this portion of data collection, and that is due on August eighth. So that is my main document that I am working on right now, is our hazard mitigation, getting that turned in. Um, LEPC was canceled. That was my plan, was to have Joe Brummel kind of do the fine tuning on it, but I might just go hang out with Steve Orr. He knows a lot. That's my plan there. Um, what else will be done? I've done other stuff, just don't know what it is at the moment. Um, actually, staff's really good at picking up on holes and then addressing them before I even know they're holes. Um, so, like, if there's people functioning in town with their business license with less than savory employees that are creating multiple problems, that's been brought to me, and whether or not we need to address revoking that business license. So, uh, I have to say, that's pretty awesome, that I don't have to drive around or listen to the scanner twenty-four seven, things of that nature. Um, and Brittany's in the bu- public requests, so we're constantly, I love the staff for bringing up things to streamline, and then at the same time, not loving, because there's always another hole in the bucket. And I'm tired of patches, but that's about where I'm at. Time limited, I'm single parenting, and that's where it's at for the next, I don't know how many days.
You got it.
That's all I got. Anything else that we need to list for next month? I will have Colette here for any other pre-treat discussions and make sure that he has her contact information. Colette? Yeah. Where's that?
I don't know if we have to have her here. I just think we need to touch base with her again and maybe find out if we're too vague, or if this is how vague it is.
I mean, as a business owner, he has very legitimate career.
And he has the resources to help us.
Yeah.
He does have the resources to help us. He does know people in this field. He does, he's smart. I might be the reason he was here, I'm sorry, but.
It's one of those, it's, this, Eric and I honestly have talked about this one, like, to death, in that, like, do you grandfather things in? That's an option, but everybody has been very clear in other public works departments that that is not appropriate at all, that you cannot do it. And as a business owner, I'm in that same lurch, as I know that I need a new roof, but now I'm going to have to require pre-treating this, that, and the other, but the reality of it is, this council's job and the town's job is to provide for public safety and sanitation, and thirty-five million dollars that we don't have creates a problem of, can we effectively do what is our primary job? So yes, lots of lost sleep. Can there be works to this document? Yes, and I get, I understand wanting the clarification. So yes, lots of lost sleep. Can there be works to this document? Yes. And I get, I understand wanting the clarification, but there was also the moment of have you read the old one? Because it is, we could go right over there right now and say you, you're shut down. Eric could say that right now according to our current ordinance. So while you don't like this, you should really read what's there and see how much you don't like that.
I just don't know how they can update off of this, like my spot or his spot or even Nick's dad, how do we know what we're putting in? I don't have grease. I don't have a fryer. I don't have.
Easier for everyone, then it's not up to someone's judgment that day, how they're feeling.
How do we test this? How do we know where we're have to go with it? Like, we, any of us contacting engineer, I think he's right. We don't have enough.
Because else, don't you feel like you're making yourself more work? Everyone's gonna come to you and say, well, what do I need to do?
Yeah.
Then you're not gonna be able to tell them like.
What does a pot chop need to do? What does uh this need to do?
Right, but that's why I'm saying like, test it. Oh, you're at these levels. Well, you need to be at these levels. Now figure out how to get there.
Well, you know, when I was at training in Bozeman, we went to that brewery and I asked him about his pre-treat. And what he had, he said, they put a grease trap in for the kitchen that was on the other side. But he didn't have to put anything for in for his brewery because by the time it goes into the water, he treats in-house. So it's back to normal water or whatever. He's treating in-house with chemicals to make it back to nothing.
So he is pre-treated.
In-house, yeah, without the pre-treat system, but he had the engineers and the capability of doing that before he built. So now we're just gonna have to figure out where each of us have to go as business owners to make it right.
But.
Yeah, Eric could go and test like right below your water or your, you know, pipe. That's where you're at and that's where you need to be.
Yeah.
By the, the day. Because what he, what does the town want it to be, you know?
I'm just really nervous that there's not an actual date for our permit renewal and that we've been in violation of the permit the entire time.
I think we have to have something soon.
And a discharge permit. I mean, we all saw the one ninety-one signs and if you dug into it, like, we're hot on the griddle of I don't, none of it is a perfect answer. I don't think we're gonna come up with a perfect ideal solution to it, but I'll ask Colette to address some of the questions. And we, and even if Colette's gone, Dan is amazing, amazing. And it's not like he hasn't been with us since nineteen eighty-two or something like that, so we're still good on resources.
So, so could we have all of, I mean, uh, all the business owners that are gonna be affected by this assemble a list of questions? And then all those get turned in and answered by our.
I'm not sure we've talked to every business owner yet. Eric says he has, but I don't know that we've talked to everybody. Does that make sense?
It's a double edged sword. And I'll still go like, you gotta be a little bit informed to participate. And again, if you, if you wanna.
Scaring them too, though.
If you want to rip one thing apart, you should probably know how horrible the current standard is. Because really, it says it's up to the discretion of the Public Works Director and if he feels that you need pre-treatment, he can immediately require it and shut you down. So pretty much what ours says, like, we need to and we can at any point enforce that. Terrifying. I don't want you just coming in and saying you got a week to get that done.
Isn't this the same? I mean, it's just lengthier, but it still says may, 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 you may enforce it. Yeah, like it still leaves it up to you guys to decide.
Sure. Yeah, and it's, it's, you know, you could dump pipe fronts, you used to dump motor oil down the city sewer over in Bozeman. I was like, what are you doing?
Yeah, and you can say industrial users, but household users can be justice. Yeah.
I mean, we can, we can all screw up the, the lagoon ultimately. I mean, Eric's not gonna be checking my sewer, you know. Yeah, some pumps were the big thing this year. Sure, sure.
But on another note with our lagoon, a happy note, we don't have any violations. Eric has changed the pattern of aeration. To address the algae problem that we have annually. And we haven't had a violation. Like, I'm so happy. Like yay, for small, and maybe in that whole permitting thing, that's gonna, less violations are in our favor. Alright.
Can I move to approve the claims or do you have something for unscheduled matters?
Do we have anything else? Yep. Any discussion on them? Alright, aye.
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 Move to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that was just as painful as I thought it was gonna be.
Nikki, you want stuff in the office or around here?
I have the vast majority of it signed in there. I came in early.
Do, because I don't wanna be here late.
So overnight, it's all over the floor.
You know.